May I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM? Oh, sorry, that's exact, I'm way off. Reconvene, there we go, we're back. Hello, everybody. It's been a long night already. All right, may I have a motion to reconvene into open session? There we go. Motion, Ms. Mammalito, seconded by Ms. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Ms. Mammalito. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, five zero. Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to our accommodations this evening, and I know we have many, so we are looking forward to recognizing those recipients.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Tomio, and thank you again to the Board of Education for giving us an opportunity to recognize some wonderful and outstanding students and the accomplishments that they bring forward. At the last public meeting of the Board of Education, we had the pleasure of recognizing our elementary students who were recognized as part of the PTA Reflection Showcase this year, and tonight we have the pleasure of welcoming those winners of the secondary portion of the program, and to help us to do that, I would like to call upon our middle school principal, Dr. Moran.
Thank you. It is such an honor to be here tonight to celebrate our students. The National PTA has a longstanding commitment to arts and education. The Reflection Program provides opportunities for recognition and access to the arts, which boosts student confidence and success in arts and life. Each year, over three hundred thousand students in pre-K through grade twelve create original works of art in response to a student-selected theme. This fifty-year-old program helps them explore their own thoughts, feelings, ideas, and develop artistic literacy, increase confidence, and find a love for learning that will help them become more successful in school and life. The two thousand and one and two thousand and two Reflections theme, "I Will Change the World By," students submitted completed works of art in one or all of the available categories: dance, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing our extraordinary middle school and high school students, PTA Reflection winners. Students, I ask you that as I announce your name, please come and join me at the podium. The secondary Reflection winners for Elwood Middle School in the category of Visual Arts winners, Elizabeth Benavides and Niti Kadamar. Honorable mention... Honorable mention is Sabrina Howe and Kenza Siddique. Film Production winner, Angelica Viviani. Photography winner, Sophia Vidovic. Literature winner, Bella Ronai. Honorable mention, Ayana Astifa. Daisy Garcia. And Gianna Rose. Congratulations to our middle school winners. Our Reflection winners from John H. Glenn High School, Visual Arts winner, Mary Luster. Honor of mention, Shayna Perot. And Nolan Reinhardt. Photography winner, Isabelle. And Literature winner, Grace Porter. Congratulations to all of our secondary PTA Reflection winners.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I know everyone's leaving, just wanted to congratulate everybody, and we love seeing all of you here this evening and being recognized, and keep up the great work. We look forward to seeing many of you again throughout your careers, and especially in June to highlight some of our wonderful seniors.
Most of you are already exiting, but students, if you have homework in other studies you would like to attend to, you are obviously excused to do so.
All right, looks like the rest of the students are here for civics class, I like it. Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to your superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tomio. I will be extremely brief tonight, as I know we have a robust agenda, but recently, I know the Board is aware, the community may not be, I am honored to serve on the Commissioner's Advisory Council. I am one of eleven superintendents in the state of New York that assists Commissioner Rosa with some of the initiatives and programs planned throughout the state through the State Education Department. So this past week, I had the chance to travel to Schenectady, actually, this time, where those important people from Albany converged to go through some of the priorities that are taking place at the state level as it pertains to our educational process. So I provided the Board a lengthy list of notes and minutes that I took during those meetings, but for the community and Board, there's a few things that I think you would find interesting. Firstly, the position of the State Education Department and their interaction with districts has changed dramatically under Commissioner Rosa. For many, many years, State Ed served as a watchdog for what schools were doing, and there really has been a cultural shift in being more partners in helping schools to accomplish their goals and missions, and that has been a palatable change that district leaders have seen in the partnership that State Ed is looking to form with local districts, and we in Elwood have benefited from that in receiving assistance from the state in many of the initiatives we are trying to bring forward and the resources they've been provided. So that's really just a pat on the back for the increased partnership. There are changes that are being made at state level to try to address the ongoing teacher shortage. For my students that are here for their civics lesson, please consider a career in education. There has been far more teachers leaving the profession than new teachers coming into it, and there is a teacher shortage profoundly in many areas of the state, not as much on Long Island, because our districts are very attractive places to work, but some of the specialty positions are becoming far more difficult to fill. So the state is looking at ways to further incentivize people to pursue education, they're looking for flexibility with certification, so people who have teaching certification have the flexibility to teach in greater areas, and they're even building in incentives that would perhaps encourage some of those who have recently retired from the profession to come back in for a period of time during this time of deficiency. So there was a lot of discussion about ways to build and recruit and build teacher training programs. There was a lot of discussion about an unforeseen circumstance that's arisen this year. A lot of the aid we receive as a school district and districts across the state is based upon the community's wealth ratio and the percentage of students who receive free and reduced-priced lunch during the school year. And every year, we ask families who qualify to fill out an application for free or reduced lunch, and then we're able to provide those meals to those households. Since the onset of the pandemic, the state has taken initiative to make food service free for all students, and we have many, many of our families that take advantage of that every day, regardless of the economic circumstances within their home. So we did not require families to fill out free and reduced-price lunch applications this year. Therefore, there's missing data. So there was a lot of discussion about how the state will determine each community's wealth ratio when assigning aid moving forward. So extensive discussion there, but no conclusion just yet. And lastly, to share with the community, two things. There is no decision that's been made on the June Regents' Exams yet from a high school students in the room, that's of particular interest to you. Last year, there were no Regents' Exams, this year, we're not yet sure. We know that the January Regents were canceled, and we'll see what is done for June, but there is no decision yet made, we are hoping that one is forthcoming soon so we can plan effectively. And last but not least, I know this is on the mind of many people in the room, it's certainly on the mind of the Board, I am in touch with those decision-makers in Albany who would have foresight to know whether or not there is a vaccine requirement coming for COVID-19 for public schools, and I can reiterate once again to the Board and community, there was no discussion regarding a vaccine mandate at the state level, and I do not anticipate one, and Dr. Siddiqui, please correct me if I give the wrong statistic, but the last statistic I saw was that only thirteen percent of students age five through eleven have received the COVID-19 vaccine in our region, therefore eighty-seven percent of students that age attending our schools have not. If a mandate were put in place, all of our classrooms would be empty, and I believe the State Education Department and the Governor's Office have taken careful note of that. That concludes my report from Albany. Any questions from the Board of Education?
Thank you for your report, Dr. Bossert. Seeing no questions or comments on your report, we will move forward with our first residence remarks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tomio, and I do apologize, I did promise the Board they would receive a very brief update from the Curriculum Committee tonight. I have asked Dr. Hall to give a very brief update from the committee, two minutes or less. Dr. Hall, thank you very much, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Good evening. The work of the Curriculum Committee this year is closely aligned to the theme of our school year, which is moving forward together. At each meeting, we have discussed updates on programs for students in grades kindergarten through twelfth grade, and this is including the use of data-informed tools to assess the impact of interrupted learning, continuing to work toward a return to normalcy. This includes classes that were scheduled in other locations due to COVID, returning to the instructional spaces that were designed for them, such as our art and music classes, and it is also the return of all of our student clubs, with some additional ones, and special activities such as the STEAM Fair, which was just held this week, and we are so pleased that we had students attending with their parents and able to engage in special learning activities again. This year, the Curriculum Committee is focused on an initiative we call Skills for Student Success in Life. This includes our new grant-funded Career Advisors, our new Career Speaker Series that just launched this week, bringing in an attorney to speak to our high school students, the growth of our Financial Literacy elective with more students enrolled, and enhancements to the college selection and application process, which our principal, high school principal, Ms. Brzinski, just shared with our Curriculum Committee. And we are working on an innovative program to find a structure to ensure that all students experience learning about essential life skills that extend beyond high school.
As an educator, I very much appreciate the round of applause for the curriculum work. Dr. Hall, thank you for your very brief report. Let me assure the Board and the community, however, that the work of the Curriculum Committee and the work going on in our classrooms is rather robust, and I would encourage members of the community who are present tonight to look at the website, we always post the dates, times, and agenda for our Curriculum Committee meetings, and they really are very informative, and I would encourage you to attend future meetings. Thank you, Dr. Hall, Mr. Tomio, I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, Dr. Hall, appreciate that update. So that brings us right back to our first residence remarks. I am anticipating many residence remarks, so if you will afford me the opportunity just to quick read a blurb that we are going to truncate, not truncate, but keep our first residence remark to thirty minutes, because the first residence remarks pertain to anything that's on the agenda before you. So we're going to allow residents to speak, we're going to enact a policy for the thirty minutes, and then for our second residence remarks. I can't speak for the Board, but it's my understanding that we will allow every resident that wishes to speak to do so, we just want to make sure that our presentations and district business goes forward tonight, we have every intention to hearing from any resident and every resident that wants to speak tonight. With that said, the Board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes, Board Policy one, two, three, zero. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the President. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due processes could be violated is prohibited. We believe it is crucial tonight to hear from everybody, members about, and the community members, about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the Board is here to listen. As we have two presentations and important district business to attend to this evening, we will be strictly adhering to the thirty-minute limit for the first residence remarks. If necessary, the Board will consider extending the second residence remarks well beyond thirty-minute limit, and if there are residents who do not have the opportunity to speak previously, they will do so at the second residence remarks. We thank you for your cooperation in advance. With that said, we are opening up the first residence remarks, so please come on up.
Good evening. Dear Dr. Bossert, Board President Tomio...
Excuse me, sorry, Ms. Cameron, if you could just...
Ms. Cameron?
Thank you. Some of us know you, not everybody.
That's a good point. And fellow Board members, as you may have been aware, and currently by the email that I sent my correspondence today, currently, and I'll bet, is growing in numbers, the following districts have joined in filing, the Amicus Coriae. This is about our constitutional rights and civil liberties. The following districts, Massapequa, Locust Valley, Island Trees, Kenequat, Hop Hog, Shoreham Waiting River, Lindenhurst, Plain Edge, and Hewlett-Woodmere. This is in connection to the January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two hearing, the hearing in the case of Michael Dimitrio versus New York State Department of Health, number two thousand and twenty-two zero zero five three two, index number six one six one two four slash two thousand and twenty-one, currently pending before the Supreme Court in New York State Second Division Appeal Department. If you are truly in support of parental choice, then you would act in concert with the community letter that was sent to Governor Hockel's office. Hockel's office dated October 25, 2001. Legal facts. March 2021, elected officials completely removed the governor's power to issue directives. Two, they did allow former Governor Andrew Cuomo to keep some of the mandates in place until the state of disaster has ended. Three, the state of disaster has ended, June 2021. Four, therefore, the ability of any governor or agency, thus including but not limited to the Department of Health, the New York State Board of Regents, to do anything outside of the legislative branch that including the State Assembly and the State Senate is illegal. Five, Governor Hockel's mandates for the last several months is illegal. She does not have the executive authority to do so. As you are familiar with the Erie County Department of Health Commissioner, in a Zoom meeting in New York, Chapter One, the academic, American Academic Pediatrics, January 20, 2022, Gail Bernstein is clear that Friday, January 14, 2022, she discusses that the state is, I quote, "backing off," that schools do not have to give close contacts. States give examples of what they can do, that schools are not mandated to do anything by the state. I further quote, "There is no transmission in the classroom," end of quote. She goes on to state, re-quote, "This is a waste of time," end quote. Control is moving to, I quote, "schools and families," end quote.
Ms. Cameron, there's your three minutes.
I'm up?
You're up, sorry.
That was quick.
I know.
COVID-19 cases are declining.
We will have a second residence remark.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mrs. Cameron, if your comments are in writing, you can also submit them to the district clerk if you'd like.
I absolutely will. And if you need any of these links, if you need verification for any of these medical facts, please let me know. I'm an email away.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. Amy Kern. I've written several emails to the board that have gone unanswered as far back as January 13, when I again explained the governor's lack of authority, as Ms. Cameron was saying, to implement mandates. This fact has since been officially established by New York State Supreme Court. You've previously advocated for parental choice where permissible. This morning, I sent a time-sensitive email to the board that also went unanswered requesting that the board vote to join three Long Island districts in filing a non-party brief in support of Tuesday's Supreme Court decision. Since then, several additional districts in both Suffolk and Nassau County have joined. Luckily, a supplemental filing will be made tomorrow, and boards now have until 8:30 a.m. to join. Will the district vote to resolve to join in this free filing as a non-party?
Thank you, Ms. Kern. I will pause the clock for a second to speak to a few of those things. A lot of your emails that come through are answered, and then you have a subsequent comment, and then they're answered again, and then a subsequent comment. And I don't think you always love the comment that you get, and we're taking things under advisement. So please don't take the lack of responding to a follow-up email every single time that we didn't hear the first email. We have, and we have responded. As far as the amicus briefing today, we did respond to your email. I know, I know I did.
I did not receive a response as of 7:15.
Please check your email. I will triple-check mine, but I am very confident that I responded to your email today about the sensitivity of it. As you can see, counsel is with us this evening. It was a time-sensitive thing, but I don't think anybody should make a time rash sensitive decision without consulting counsel. Majority of the membership that sits up here is working members. So it would have been very hard to hold an emergency meeting at, as what your request was. We're here this evening. We're hearing it. I think the attorney and the courts understand that to put a timestamp on something is a little hard. So they have extended us the opportunity. And there are many Board of Educations either holding emergency meetings this evening or currently have scheduled meetings on the docket. So we're here this evening. I have a sense that there's going to be a lot of comments about the amicus brief. So not to ignore your question, but we will hear from everybody and have a conversation about it.
Okay. And my other thought was alternatively, if you won't vote to join that brief, if you would consider voting to resolve to restore parental choice upon the lifting of the stay and/or upon the ending of the mandate as an alternative approach.
I think the board will take that question under advisement as well. We're going to have dialogue later on this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll be here. Thank you, Ms. Kern. And Ms. Kern, just for the record, the email was responding to at 4:27 p.m.
Ready?
Ready. Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Vargas. So everybody knows that they've proven according to science that masks are useless, and it's illegal to mandate them, as we've found out. And it's against the Constitution. So why are you guys giving this to the kids, something that is illegal? So it's basically, you're telling the kids, let's do something that's illegal. So it's giving them something to do that's illegal. So now they think that they should go out and do other things that's illegal. Because now they know wearing a mask as a mandate is illegal. So it's kind of giving them the edge to go do other things that's illegal. Because their parents and the law is telling them it's illegal. So now they could go out and do more stuff that's illegal. Number two, all doctors, especially Stony Brook doctors, are threatened for termination for the vaccines if they do not tell patients that they're safe and they're good for them and they work. Because vaccines do not work. As you guys could see, everybody who's getting vaccinated is still getting sick, still spreading the disease. You guys have a quar, if you're, you don't have to quarantine if you're around somebody with COVID if you're vaccinated. But meanwhile, you could still spread the disease. Does that make any sense? Doesn't make any sense to me. And then why is Biden being sued by so many states against the civil rights by so many people because of this? Because of all this stuff with the vaccines, forcing the vaccines on people? I mean, you guys have a member on your board who's so actively pushing vaccines, making TikToks and stuff like this on vaccines. We have any answers?
I think, as I said before to Ms. Kern, there's going to be a lot of commentary tonight, and the Board of Education is prepared to have lengthy conversation for the community this evening. So if you don't mind just waiting a little while for everyone to get through it, I'm sure you'll be able to hear our conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Vargas. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Cruz, and I'm a parent. I have two children, one in Harley and another here in middle school. And I don't want to change the momentum of what everyone is discussing because everyone's concerns and issues are important. After reviewing tonight's EMS presentation online, which I reviewed, my impression from tonight's middle school presentation is that the focus seems to be mostly geared on social and interpersonal relationships rather than academic. I voiced my opinion and my concerns at other meetings about the void of academic initiatives at the elementary and the middle school levels. And I wanted to say yesterday, I attended the curriculum meeting, and it was very, it was amazing to hear all of the academic initiatives that are in place for the high school students. I thought it was, it was a great segue to actually add that into middle school. I think there was a, there was a lot of talk about study guides and test-taking initiatives in high school and life skills. And I think this is something that should be brought into the middle school. We have a lot of students that come from the elementary that have not taken tests, that do not know how to study. This is something that I feel is something that's imperative for them to learn academically, to fill in those voids that there are many students that have when it comes to writing, when it comes to grammar, when it comes to these life skills that they need to learn at an elementary level, at middle school. Once we're in high school, these are habits that we've learned. These are habits that are sometimes hard to change. But if we build this at a young age and we give them that incentive to really learn how to study, to learn how to take tests, to have these skills, it's something that they could build on in high school. So I know that honors and all of the honor rolls that the middle school have here, it doesn't count, it doesn't count. It's not high school. But it really is a benchmark. It's, it sets the bar for high school. So if we're learning in middle school to really study and to take tests and to write properly and to read and to have all these classic novels that I don't really see any of the kids reading in middle school. When I was in middle school, I was reading classic novels. I know that maybe we're in a culture right now that we're canceling everything where, you know, there might be some historical reason why we don't teach certain things. But the main reason is the history is there so that we learn. And this is something that as an adult, you're going to need. You're going to need to have these life skills. You're going to need to know how to write a letter. You're going to need to know how to write a paper. You're going to need this for life. This, these are life skills that you learn early. You don't learn them in high school. You learn them at the elementary level.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
All right. So I'm just hoping that we can see more academic initiatives and not the social personal skills that this, the presentation that you're going to show is really about social personal skills.
And you, I know you've been here before, and you definitely have voiced your concern about the academic rigor and more so about the elementary level.
Yes. And I don't want to be a nudge, but I'm going to continue to bring up academics because I think it's really important.
A hundred percent. That's the business we're in. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I just want to assure you that the intended, you're leaving before you hear the response. Okay. Tonight's presentation was intended to be about the social emotional growth within the middle school and focused on the mental health initiatives and some of the professional development. I did not ask Dr. Moran to prepare a presentation on the academics and the programs that we are implementing at the middle school. And many of the priorities you identified, the administration shares. And I think you'll find that refreshing to hear. Many of the things you identified of what should be priorities in this middle school and in our, within our program, we're in full agreement with. So what I would invite you to do, and I'm certain they will not in agreement, is please give a call to our middle school administration or Dr. Hall's office, and they will take you through a lot of the wonderful things that are happening in the building that I think you'll be very pleased to hear. That's not what was on the presentation agenda tonight, so it's not included in the slides. But the work that you're referring to is certainly happening in the building. Thank you so much.
Hey, I'm, ooh.
Hey, who?
I'm Alex. I have a daughter in Harley, two more daughters coming soon to you guys. So I want to talk about bullies, right? I think you guys talk a lot about bullies. The kids, it's a big initiative. If you get bullied, tell a teacher, stand up to a bully. Now, there's one person in New York State right now who is telling every parent and every child that they have to cover their face with a mask until she says so. Now, if there's not a better definition of a bully than that, I'd like to hear it. I really would like to hear it. Now, we say, we say that you have, if you want to be educated in New York State, you have to cover your face. Like, we're living in some medieval theocracy, except it's more equitable because the girls get to go to school and the boys have to cover their face as well. It's ridiculous. We say that if you see a bully, if you see someone being bullied, tell a teacher. Go to an adult, tell a teacher. What if the teachers and the adults in your life are taking orders from the bully? I get it. No, I get it. I get you guys are in a bad position. You are tasked with enforcing these rules. You are tasked with enforcing the law, just following orders. What a dubious group to be a part of, the "I was just following orders" crowd. I would not want to be a part of that group. Now, it's like, it's crazy. It's like, wear a, do what I say, wear a mask or else. Or else what? Or else what? I want to ask you guys a serious question. Have you, and you don't have to answer it, but ask yourself, have any of you actually ever stood up to a bully in your entire life? Have you? You know what? It's risky. It takes guts. This woman, who's the governor of our state, has not been challenged once. We don't know if she's going to follow through with her threats. We don't know if she's going to withhold funding. We don't know if you're going to get removed from your unpaid position on the board. We don't know that because no one has the guts to stand up to her. We're asking you to practice what you preach. Stand up to a bully. Stand up to a bully. It's not easy. It's not easy. You might get a bloody nose, but you know what? A lot of bullies back down when they get confronted. They back down, and you will never know unless you stand up to them. So please, represent us. Don't be afraid to fight back. Start fighting now. Thank you.
Sir, if you could come back to the podium. Alex, could you just come back to the podium? Would you mind coming back to the podium for a second, please? Thank you. Just for the record, we're recording, and our minutes are digital. And you did not state your last name. Would you mind stating your last name for the record, please?
Shiffrin, Alex Shiffrin.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Chris Fox. I have a question. I know that people on the board and the administration is pretty closely connected to what's going on at the state. So I have just a very basic question. Did anybody on the state, county, or local level ever do any sort of risk assessment of what would happen if you took 2 million of New York State's children and enforced masking on them for seven hours a day for a protracted amount of time? It has now been 250 class days this experiment has been going on. Did anybody do an assessment to what would happen to their mental well-being, to their emotional well-being, to their social well-being? Or have we just let the experiment run and not realized what was going on? Because the way I see this is pretty simple. Out of fear of COVID, nothing was looked at to what the collateral damage might be if you forced the masking on the kids for as long as you have. Last time I was here, I explained and quoted the U.S. Surgeon General. There is a mental health crisis. So the question is, did anyone do any sort of risk assessment?
I think you prefaced the question by saying, has the state, the county, Department of Health, the Board of Education, has not done a risk assessment for the Board of Education, for the School District of Elwood, if that's what you're asking?
I am asking if anybody, the Brain Trust of New York, if anybody has done any sort of.
I don't think anybody here is in the ability to speak for the county, the state, or the organizations in which you reference. If that's a question that you have for them, I think that would be best asked too.
I have, and I have not received that. But my, my question more goes that you do have contact with the state. So have any of these questions ever come up, that you put an unprecedented experiment into place that is hurting the children? So did this ever come up?
To my knowledge, it has not. But I can't speak for the rest of the Board of Education. I can't speak for the administration.
Can someone ask, please, and then get back to us?
Sure. Hopefully, we won't get the same response that you've gotten, which is none.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We thank you for that.
Thank you.
district. Just had a comment and a couple of questions directed to Dr. Bossert. What you'd indicated that you'd gone to a conference in Schenectady, and nothing came up about...
Mr. Kern, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're just a little taller than everybody. We would just raise the mics so we could hear you and those folks at home who are watching as well. Thank you.
Is that better? That's better. Okay.
Much better. Thank you. Much better. Thank you.
I'm not going to fiddle with this, but Dr. Bossert, you had indicated you had gone to a meeting where you were sure nothing had come up about vaccine mandates. However, the governor has publicly stated she would like a school vaccine mandate. She has used the words that "we are going to get this done." She also, currently, there is a bill pending in the legislature for a K-12 vaccine mandate. The question that I had is, did any of that come up during this meeting that you attended in Schenectady a few days ago?
I stated no, and the answer is no.
Did you bring any of that up, that say, look, these issues are out here, you're saying no? What is the fate of anything's going to happen to these bills?
Mr. Curran, I'm available in my office about eight hours a day. This section of the meeting is dedicated to public input and to address questions to the Board of Education. If you have questions for me, I'm happy to speak to you on the phone tomorrow.
Then I can certainly ask the same question to the board. Before Dr. Bossert went to this meeting, were any instructions given by the board to Dr. Bossert to address any of these issues in light of the governor's comments and the pending bill in the legislature?
Directive of the Board of Education was not to give Dr. Bossert those questions. There was agenda put forth and, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Bossert, was any of those items on the agenda? Or was there opportunities to add items to the agenda of the meeting in which you attended?
No, the commissioner sets the agenda for the meetings that she calls.
Okay, then my next comment is, as a Board of Education who has previously advocated to the state for parent choice, currently there is legislation to take that choice away. My next question is, what plans, if any, does the board have to continue advocating for parent choice in light of what the governor is saying she wants to take away?
No, that the action of the Board of Education previously is to write advocacy letters through the legislative committee. The board and the administration have signed and sent numerous letters. Our response is similar to Mr. Fox's, similar to Dr. Bossert's and to yours. There is no response. Unfortunately, our government that's working for us isn't responding to us. So I think everybody, I can't speak for everybody, but I know everybody I know has not gotten a response. There's been no pinned-down answer. There's been no clarity. There's been no clarification. There's been no metrics. There's been no ideas to when anything is going to be stopped. If when we get something, the field goal post continues to get moved down the field. So I think we're all in the same position of frustration, angst, and anger that we're not getting the specific answers in which we're asking.
Then my last comment will be this. Then if we're not getting the answers we want, I think we need to keep trying. The legislative committee met in October. A letter was sent in October. I think it's time for the committee to reconvene and another letter be sent.
Thank you for that, Mr. Curran. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Jackie Costanza. I have three children, two currently in the district, a third grader, a first grader, and a pre-K kid. So I want to talk about unmasking our kids and having parent choice, which I think a majority of us here today are hoping that you will be the voice of the parents on behalf of the entire community to the state. Because clearly, as Alex said, the bully, the governor, is not listening to us as parents. So we need you to represent us. We need you to be strong leaders for the community. And we need you to do this on behalf of our children. My kids had one glorious day without a mask on. Only for that mask to be put back on their faces the next day. So I asked my seven-year-old daughter before she got on the bus, Aubrey, what was the greatest part or what was different about not wearing a mask yesterday? And she sat there with her backpack on, and you know what she said to me after she thought for two to three seconds? I felt like I could breathe. As a mom, hearing my seven-year-old child tell me that she felt like she could breathe and go on to tell me that when she wears her mask in school for all those hours, she feels like she can't get air? Something is wrong here. My kids, two of my kids have already had COVID twice. The first time my son got COVID was at Harley, six feet apart, with a plastic barricade, wearing a mask and everybody wearing a mask. And you cannot tell me that it wasn't the teacher and there was multiple other kids in his classroom that got COVID, taking the most extreme precautions in the height of a pandemic in the unknown. So please, please, on behalf of us, I implore you. I have not had a voice and I've been silenced for a long time. I will not be silenced anymore on behalf of my children. My children will be able to breathe if we do not take a stand now and we do not take the momentum and have you leaders speak on behalf of us, the community members, on behalf of our children. We will be doing this for years. Let's go. Take a stance, join the other school districts, and say, no more. It's parent choice and that's it. I have two other things that are completely on a lighter note. The first one, I encourage because I appreciate student council at Boyd. I know literature is possibly coming back to Harley. Can we consider bringing back drama, theater, all those activities that my third grader, you know, enjoyed when he was in Harley? And bring back some more socialization so they can feel like kids again? And that's parent, we pay that as parents too, so that doesn't even come out of, you know, the funding of the district or anything. And bottom line, we all know why people, elected officials, school officials, don't push back to the governor is because she threatens to take the funding away from the schools.
That's your three minutes. Thank you.
So let's, it all comes down to money, but let's make it come down to the kids this time.
Thank you, Ms. Costanza.
Ms. Costanza, I know the, I know the board's going to have lengthy dialogue about your first issue, but your issue regarding the clubs at Harley. I've had a conversation with Mr. Pallaci, who runs our booster club. Those clubs will be restored this spring. You'll have that to look forward to for certain. And by the way, you're very natural behind the microphones. You consider a career there.
Good evening, Sark. I just want to preface this by saying we're at the almost 30-minute mark. So if you would be the last speaker for this portion of residents' remarks and then after our district business, we will open the floor back up for residents' remarks and have the opportunity to hear from everybody. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I just want to piggyback on something that she said.
Just have your name for the record, Sark.
Oh, Gerard Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
I just want to piggyback on something that she said. And I am neither pro-mask or anti-mask. But one thing that I want to point out is that there's something, I don't know, I haven't seen anything on the news of any kids dying from wearing masks. But one statistic that is standing out, and this is consistent across the country, is that the teen suicide rate has gone through the roof, right? And in my personal opinion, the culprit for this is the cell phone and social media, right? These kids are socially awkward. They are disconnected from reality, et cetera, et cetera, right? And me personally, I feel as though kids should not have cell phones in the school. I don't, I don't, there is no need to have cell phones in the school. When my kids go to school, especially in this district that I'm very proud of, I feel safe while they're in school. I feel like I know where they are and I don't feel like they can just wander off and leave the school without someone knowing about it. But to piggyback on what she said, I think it's important that if we're going to have, or if we're going to allow kids to have cell phones in middle school and high school, then we should also be doing something to make sure that these kids have an opportunity to really socialize with one another, to get to know each other on a personal basis, not just through Twitter, not just through Snapchat. Like real-world communication between each other. Get to know, really get to know each other, you know. If you, if, let's say my daughter, she may have a friend, you know, get to know her friend. Get to know if her friend has a brother. Get to know what her friend's parents do, et cetera, et cetera. I just hope, you know, going forward, that this is something that the schools really focus on because this is a real problem. These kids are killing themselves at an alarming rate. And it's really disturbing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Hi. I just want to make a quick comment about the cell phone. I had the opportunity to travel down south last week and visit several high schools. And the one thing that I noticed consistently throughout the high schools was that when you walk into their classrooms, and this is like three or four different high schools, they had like, you know, those little like pocket shoe racks that we, you know, you can buy at the store for like $5. They were all numbered and the phones were put in there. And I asked the students, how does that work? Do you feel like uncomfortable with that? And they said, no, they actually, it's getting to your point. They appreciated that somebody put some sort of structure onto their usage and they were respectful of that and it works well down there. So maybe that's something to put forward as a shared decision thing. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Spice. All right. Dr. Bossert, we are up to our...
Thank you very much, Mr. Tomio. Tonight, I've asked Ms. Dunkel, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, to prepare a presentation which will serve as a basic overview of the budget process. I think it's important for the board and the community to understand that tonight is just an overview of how we will go about planning the budget, the different components that need to be examined and the different decisions we'll be faced with. Tonight is a very surface glance at what we'll be discussing in great depth and detail over the next few months. So I know there are a lot of questions from board members and community members relating to exactly what our program will look like next year, what our tax rate might be, and all of our different revenues. But tonight is just an introduction, so I appreciate you viewing Mrs. Dunkel's presentation in that, through that lens. Ms. Dunkel, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. As Dr. Bossert said, this is just an overview of the budget process. Each year, we do this as the first presentation to remind the board and educate the community on the process and what that entails as we move through the budget process and present a final budget to the community. Three brief items we'll just touch on is the budget calendar, the budget overview, going over how the different components that make up the budget, and just to recap on the 2021, the 2021 school year and where we are thus far for 2122. This is the budget calendar. It's also available on our website at each of the next board meetings. I will be presenting different pieces of the budget, explaining exactly what that entails. We talk about, tonight we're talking about the overview, obviously. Then we talk about the different expense side, the different revenue side, the final overview. And that's where we get input both from the community and the Board of Education before we present the budget for the budget hearing, which is in April. And then May 17th is the statewide budget vote. So the budget is a financial roadmap for the district and is constantly changing based on the needs of the students and the programs. This development process typically begins in October and continues throughout the school year in April, when again, we adopt, or the board adopts, the budget presented by the superintendent. School budget has two sides, an expense side and a revenue side. And we develop those revenues and expenses based on projections we receive, both from the state and our ongoing budget for the expenses. We take a look at the current expenses that are happening throughout the school year. We look back over a two-, three-year period to try to estimate exactly what the expenses will be for the upcoming budget cycle. And as in any budget cycle we prepare, the revenues and expenses must equal one another. One cannot exceed the other. So the expenditure budget is made up of three separate components. The administrative, capital, and program component. I'll go into detail what compiles those three components. And the revenue side is made up of, as you all know, property taxes, state aid, and miscellaneous revenues. The administrative component side of the budget is made up of school budget operations, the Office of the Superintendent, the Business Office, anything that's really related to administrative purposes. That includes also our insurance, our legal services, and any central services that take place. The capital component deals with our operations and maintenance and all the salaries and benefits related to that. It also includes our debt service and any transfer to capital that we may have related to any projects. The largest component of the expense side is the program component. This deals directly with teacher salaries and benefits and essentially anything that's related to the instructional programs. Special education and transportation are included as well. And those, both transportation and special education are two very large portions of the expense side of the budget. Again, the revenue budget is made up of three major sources, property taxes, state aid, and miscellaneous revenue. And I just wanted to briefly touch base on the state aid. I know that Newsday published an article, I believe it was last week, projecting our state aid numbers for the next school year. And I just want to remind the community that that is an initial projection and those numbers are not always accurate. So we will continue to update the board and the community as we move forward to provide the accurate numbers that we'll be, we'll be receiving in the next school year. Again, this is just an illustration to show revenues and expenditures must equal one another and balance out the budget. As far as updating on the budget status, for the year-end June 2021, our unassigned fund balance was 2.6 million and the total fund balance decreased by 311,000. Our projected year-end for this year, overall spending will be within the budget legally because it has to be. And also, our health insurance and transportation costs for this year are reflecting large increases and that will also be an impact for the 2223 school year. Additionally, as far as the year-end for June 2021, I just wanted to remind the board and the community that the school district did receive a glowing order report. And just recently, we received our fiscal stress score from New York State. And Elwood was once again given a fiscal stress score of no designation, which is the highest score you could receive. That is all for this evening. Just a small overview again of the process. The next budget meeting is on February 10th and we will start to present the expense side of the budget at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. And before we ask the board if there are any questions, I just do want to add a comment for the board to please consider as we move forward in the process. One of the real difficult tasks we're going to have in this budget season is changing public perception. Newsday has done a great job not helping us with that and reporting how fat with cash school districts are. We did not find ourselves in that position in Elwood. We have a number of challenges that we face in the very near future. And what we don't want to do is plan our fiscal health from year to year. And yes, we're in a good spot this year and I feel very comfortable we will be in a good spot next year. But what we have to do more of in our district and community is planning for our long-term fiscal health. And there are some fiscal cliffs in our very near future that will become real challenges to maintaining our program and staffing if we don't address them immediately. We have debt falling off the books that will create a marked decrease to our revenue. And we have a federal grant that provides us millions of additional dollars that expires in two years. And when we brought these initiatives forward this year with things that we love and support, we did say, and we have to keep in mind, but these will go away in two years if we do not find ways to include them in our regular budget. Changing the narrative in the community is going to be a challenge. But the first step in that process is putting forth a responsible proposal for the community to understand. So I look forward to engaging with the board and the community, identifying our priorities, working with the Business Office and all of our administrative team to really be responsive to the needs of our students. So I thank you in advance for your collaboration in that, but we do have some challenges ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Thank you, Ms. Dunkel, for the quick update. We look forward to the long process and the budget unfolding from now until May. So thank you. We look forward to seeing the rest of it. Are there, yeah, right? Any other questions, comments? See, none? Question, comment? Dr. Sadiki?
Hi, no, I was just going to make a comment.
Hi, no, I was just going to make a comment. I just, at the last portion, when you said that the designation was no designation, I just want to really applaud you for that because that's, that's a big deal, I think. And I think that that's an excellent, excellent place to be and I wanted to thank you publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to my staff because they are a huge part of why the Business Office functions so well. But the fiscal stress designation is a big deal because it can affect our credit rating and we do have to go out for a credit rating this year for Moody's because we are anticipating borrowing the last piece of the bond that was passed a few years ago. So, thank you.
And Lorraine?
Yes?
Just to add on, the reason that, that the credit rating is so important is because it provides us with a lower interest rate, which therefore makes our payments.
Correct. It saves us money over the course.
So that's why this is such a great, important designation to have. Correct?
That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
Definitely. And prior to many of our arrivals at this district or Board of Education, there was a board previous to us that saw and witnessed the financial stresses that this district went through. And when many of us got on the board, it was on the mend, but we were still being designated susceptible and we have put multi-year plans in place. So when we look at these budgets, I ask, as I always ask, to please forecast as best as we can. I know there's many unknowns of many variables, but we make sure that it's a multi-year process when we look at this budget because what happens in 2022, 23 is wonderful, but if we can't sustain program and we can't make sure that we have the funds to withhold all what we're doing, we're going to be in the same trouble that we've been in, in years past. So please keep a watchful eye and yes, commend your office for keeping us in the position that we're in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And as we transition to our next presentation, I do want to take this moment while Dr. Moran and Ms. Ballel prepare to share some good news with the board and community. One of the things that is part of the budget is our building aid. And the building aid is money we receive to reimburse us for projects that have been done as part of the capital bond that the community was kind enough to support some years ago. One of the jewels in the crown of that bond work is the remodeling of the auditorium at John Glenn High School. The board has previously discussed, when that is, project is complete, to rebrand that space as the Performing Arts Center at John Glenn High School, and we are very supportive of that. And I am pleased to announce to the board this evening that we will be given the keys to the auditorium next week. The snow, yes, round of applause is very appropriate. The snowstorm may impact the final touches that were going to be done this weekend, so we are looking at Tuesday as the day where the CEO will be hands to it, to us, so to speak. But we are working with the high school administration to plan a special ribbon cutting event where we'll be able to showcase the new room and show it off to the community. And of course, we'll make sure that the board is available to attend that special event. It's been a long time coming. I thank the community present for your support in that initiative. I thank the board for their patience through a long process. And I will remind you that the very same remodeling would be taking place in this room starting next summer. And this room will also be an outstanding environment for our students, faculty, and staff. So that is the good news from our bond work this week. Some weeks ago, we anticipated a presentation from our middle school administration, our new assistant principal, Ms. Ballel, and our beloved principal, Dr. Moran. The focus will be about all of the wonderful initiatives taking place under the umbrella of professional development, social emotional learning, and a lot of different items that Dr. Moran and Ms. Ballel have prioritized amongst their staff and students. They were scheduled to make this presentation two weeks ago and unfortunately they were unable to do so, so they have waited two weeks, one hour, and 15 minutes. So without further ado, Dr. Moran, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bossert and our Board of Education. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to celebrate some of the great initiatives that we are spearheading at Elwood Middle School. We know your time is valuable and we appreciate the opportunity to share our momentum moving forward, especially during these challenging times. As we have presented to the board in the past on many occasions, you know that we have applied for the National Forum for Acceleration in Middle Grades Schools to Watch Program. This was a three-year full-staffed journey that resulted in the creation of a 96-page application, which was submitted on July of 2020. The final phase of the application process is a two-day site visit from the Schools to Watch organization. As many things, this was put on hold due to COVID. We are so thrilled to share with the board that we were contacted this week to set up our site visits in the coming month. Our hope is that we will be awarded the national distinction of being a model middle school in Washington DC this coming June. In our journey to create a middle school that aligns with the tenants of the National Forum for the Accelerations, which are academically excellent, developmentally responsive, socially equitable, and having a structure that supports and understands the middle-level learner, we are here tonight to discuss four initiatives that will further enhance the EMS program. I would like to ask Mrs. Ballel to, our assistant principal, to share with you some of the insights that we have been able to gather from our students.
Good evening. In the spring of 2021, we administered a survey to our students to gain a better understanding of their middle school experience and their needs. We received 313 responses. We asked the students questions such as, what is something you think is important for the adults in the building to know about our school? What are some things you wish adults and students in the building would do or not do? We asked students to share experiences that may have been upsetting to them, changes that they wish to see in our school community, and if they were interested in being a part of our committee to review the code of conduct. Listening to our students' voices gave us valuable insight into their perspectives and provided us with information that we have been able to use to drive positive change in our building. Let's start by celebrating some of the positive feedback that we received from our students. They recognize how hard our staff and students work and they have learned the importance of taking care of their mental health. They feel that our mantra of respect, responsibility, and relationships has helped EMS. Our students feel that the adults in our school are open to change and that we are making progress as a building. They are invested in their education and are willing to work hard. Our students recognize the benefits they receive from opportunities to practice their leadership, problem-solving, and creative thinking skills. Many students expressed that their teachers are kind. They feel supported by them and they feel that they are open to discussing topics which were not being discussed in the past. We also received valuable feedback as to what our students need from us as the adults that surround them every day. Many of our students seek to build connections and trusting relationships with us. They like when we are friendly with them in our hallways and would like us to be more present overall. Students voiced that they would prefer more individualized discipline. They feel that we are making progress in our school, but we still have a ways to go. However, some students do not feel heard and they experience hatred among their peers and instances of gender bias. Our students want to see more positive messages of acceptance in our halls and our LGBTQ students want to feel more included. They expressed that when we create opportunities for their voices to be heard, they, and this is a quote, "feel valued and they become the best version of themselves." Based on the feedback that we received from our students, we synthesized the information and compiled a list of academic and interpersonal needs. Academically, our students need us to model and cultivate a positive attitude towards school and a high level of commitment to academics, which will lead to aspirations in pursuing higher education. Most importantly, our students' social and emotional well-being needs to be addressed in order to ensure that they are available for learning. In regard to our students' social and emotional skills, they need supportive and healthy relationships with both peers and adults. They need strategies and skills to promote self-esteem, self-confidence, self-regulation, and conflict resolution. We need to not only teach, but model empathy for our students in order for them to gain a better understanding of how their behavior affects others around them. Learning these skills will promote self and social awareness and will strengthen their ability to develop relationships, leading to more responsible decision-making. As we reviewed the needs of our students as a full faculty, we recognized connections between some of the work we were already engaged in and those that were often topics of conversation, such as restorative justice, trauma-sensitive practices, student mentoring, and service learning. Restorative justice is a powerful preventative approach to discipline that focuses on relationship building and repairing harm after transgressions occur. Implemented well, it shifts the focus of discipline from simply giving a consequence to teaching and understanding how our actions affect our community. Trauma-sensitive practices start with an understanding of how trauma can impact learning and behavior. Educators look at behavior as a means of communication and reflect on their teaching practices to find ways to better support students who may be experiencing trauma. Research shows that student mentoring programs promote positive social skills and facilitate interpersonal connections. It helps young people interpret and manage life challenges, including relationships with peers and parents. It also facilitates meaningful conversations that boost cognitive skills. Service learning is an educational approach that combines learning objectives with community service in order to provide a pragmatic, progressive learning experience while meeting
Some of these initiatives have already begun while others are only in their infancy. Currently at EMS, the Restorative Justice Committee is in year two. We have a group of trained teachers who are spearheading this work. Currently, our students engage in community circles weekly in our advisory program known as court. We do this to build relationships with peers and trusted adults, as well as we are now working on effective statements with our staff. Effective statements seek to explain to students how their choices, actions affect the environment around them. So an example may be, instead of somebody simply saying to students, "Be quiet," you could say something like, "It is hard for me to teach and your classmates to hear when you are speaking during the lesson." This year, we created the EMS pantry as a service opportunity for all students to supply monthly boxes of food for our EMS families in need. This has been a full-school initiative with students and staff supplying, inventorying our supplies, as well as packing the food for delivery, and staff alternate each month delivering the food. We are in the stage of gathering more information about the best approach to creating a mentoring program where our students at risk are paired with trusting adults to connect and support them. As we learned in our professional development in trauma-sensitive practices, like the guidance presentation to our staff in a conference that Mrs. Brzezinski and I attended, it takes just one trusting, caring adult to alter the trajectory of a student's life. Here are some photos to capture some of the work I was just referencing. You can see our pantry being stocked by our students. The bottom picture to the right is an example of what our court community circles look like, and the top is a slide from one of the presentations to our staff about recognizing and understanding trauma in the classroom. We are looking forward to engaging in professional development to continue our momentum moving forward in the following objectives. For restorative justice, we are looking to train more staff, create a model for when disciplinary incidents occur, we are creating a toolkit and resources for our teacher, and seeking to review our code of conduct to pair restorative practices with current ones. For service learning, we're in the process of creating a committee. We will be looking to engage in curriculum writing for every student to complete a service learning portfolio in their time at EMS. And we're working with the high school to create opportunities for this to be high school bearing credit and continue the program at the high school. For our student mentoring committee, we need to work with our staff developers to build the program. This will include developing the criteria for mentoring, train our mentors, create the expectations, and determine teacher incentives. We see our trauma-sensitive practices being infused in all three of these previously mentioned initiatives. This includes teacher training on how to identify trauma, proactive teaching strategies to incorporate in their teaching, and creating a multi-tiered system of support. Our plan for professional development is looking at years one and two. We have two trainers for a total of eight days to work with our committees, small groups of teachers, and some full faculty training. We will also be including representatives from the high school in each of these training sessions. Year three, we anticipate to be maintenance for our committee members to address any pitfalls and plan for longevity. Both of our professional developers are esteemed professors at Adelphi University, Dr. Lisa Minakozzi, who is an assistant professor of early childhood education, and the program director for the Educational Leadership Program, and Mr. Dr. Devin Thornburg, who has been a lifelong professor of education. We very much appreciate your time and are open to any questions or feedback.
Thank you both for a great presentation. Hope you're both feeling better. We definitely missed you last board meeting, so thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Weiss?
First off, thank you very much because I know how much time and effort has gone in to putting this together and nothing is ever really easy, especially in, you know, the spring and the time that, you know, we had with this COVID. So I, I want you to know that first off. I think one of the things I wanted to ask was, when you start at the beginning and you talked about the survey, how many students are, you said you received 313 responses, but what does that represent of the student population in EMS at that time?
We had approximately 460 students, so it was a very large sample size of return that we got.
Was it a one-day thing? Like, did you, so whoever was absent didn't take the survey? Is that how it worked?
Um, no, we gave the teachers a window of a week. We did it through their social studies class, so the teachers helped support the distribution of.
So why was there not a full, why was there not 469 responses?
Well, you know, last year was not an easy year and it was certainly difficult. So we had students in varying degrees of remote learning, quarantining, so I would imagine, and we did not force any student who did not want to take.
Okay, so if the student said, "I don't want to participate in this," then that was noted they didn't want to participate.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. The other thing that I, these are the questions that you asked, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so I, I think what I would like to see, or what I've, I think some of us would have liked to have seen, is the breakdown by question by grade. And I think what that information would provide, and I do understand that this is just feedback to go forward, is that, you know, you have, let's say the eighth grade class is 182 people, and I don't know if that's correct or not, it's just a number that I had seen. That, those, that class is gone now, and now you've got sixth graders in. And with every class, for those that, you know, of us that have had kids, every class has a different culture and different values and different needs. So I would hate to see the culture of the eighth grade class, put, programs put into place based on their needs where they don't necessarily reflect the demographics currently of the EMS and the needs of the EMS. So I guess I would just say, is there another, you know, like, I hate to always take one pinpoint in time of data and use that to develop a program that's going to be long-lasting.
Sure. No, I think that's a great point. And we do survey our students very frequently and that's one of the components of working with our staff developers that we are looking for. It's sort of a benchmark system, sort of how we do with our R-Ready for reading and math. And there are many options out there, so we'll be working with some of our professional developers to come up with some that we can do two to three times a year.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's really important and it's fluid. You know, you want to be able to look at something and say, well, this was important back in September of 2021, but now this is more of an element that we have to focus on. So, and I have full confidence that you guys will do that and pivot. And then I had just a couple of questions about, and that, and that goes to really, when you talk about servicing the student needs, because I, I do see some things that really do concern me, and that's where really, I think, when you do that focus of looking in and seeing really what percentage and what grade these particular needs address, you know, and so that you can really kind of super-focus, you know. For the last couple of years, we've really worked on making the LGBTQ population feel, you know, as part of the community at the middle school. So it just concerns me that with all the stuff that we've implemented over the last couple of years, there's still this voice that says that they're not included.
Yeah, that stood out to us as well, Mrs. Weiss, I have to tell you. And I think it's important that we pause there for a second. You are demonstrating the value of student voice. Implementing methodologies to get more perspectives from students is a priority across the district. And Dr. Moran, Ms. Brzezinski, and our, our administrators have invested a great deal of their time in professional development on ways to glean student voice and use it in a decision-making process. You- You pointed out a great example of where that becomes important. We have taken a great deal of pride in the work that we have done to build a culture of acceptance and to work specifically with our LGBTQ community and training our teachers, but yet the students still say, "We feel we could use more." That's important to know. We can't say, "Job done, check the box, move on," when the students are saying, "No, here's where we feel the needs are." So, I really commend the middle school administration for taking the time to ask such pointed questions and seek such direct feedback from all of our students to help them identify the priorities in the building and then to shape program around those priorities. You know, we do a lot of things to try to make sure we are addressing the needs of the students. The board is well aware that one of the activities is that I take the greatest pride in my exit interviews with the senior class. You get that candid feedback directly from the students to say, "Here's the things we think are going well, and here's the things that we think that can be improved." And when you speak to students, you get it without filter, trust me. So, that is amongst the most valuable feedback we receive, and again, I commend the administration for taking the time to ask difficult questions and then to respond to the answers they received.
Right, and again, I think it has to be not a one-point conversation at a one time, it has to be a fluid. And so, you know, with the, you know, with that particular point that you brought up with the LGBT, it's not a matter of doing more, it's a matter of, are we not hitting the mark on what your needs are? And that's for every, you know, type of student, no matter what, and I think that just stood out to me as one of the, you know, needs and the relationships that I think needs to be really focused on. Am I making?
Something about the race for excellence having no finish line comes to mind. We are proud of the work that we're doing. We know the job is never done. So, while we are reflective of the things that we have accomplished, we look forward to even greater success moving forward.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you done, Ms. Weiss? You have another question?
One more, and then I'm going to let you go. So, when you go to the, how can we meet these needs, and you talk about restorative justice and trauma-sensitive, Tom's going to, I think, ask the question about restorative. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as you with your trauma-sensitive practices. Are you talking like the death of a parent or something like that? I'm not really quite sure.
No, that's actually a very great question, Mrs. Weiss, and that's what we've been learning with some of the conferences that we are going to, is that trauma is very personal. So, what might be a traumatic experience for me, you can have the same exact experience in your life, and based on maybe different levels of support that you have, it won't present itself as trauma. So, we're really learning, and the first step in this is what is trauma and what can it look like in the classroom? We are not teaching our teachers to have to resolve trauma. It's a matter of recognizing that it can present itself in many different ways. Our mental health staff did a presentation to our staff and really showed how sometimes disrespectful, inappropriate, disengaged behavior can really be a manifestation of trauma. And oftentimes, we think trauma has to be this very large event in somebody's life, and that's actually not the case. A lot of trauma-informed practices talks about, it's really about the support systems children have, and it talks about really having one trusted adult that can really make a major difference in the trajectory of their life. It's not just in their middle school days, making them feel good about themselves, it's long-term.
Thank you, that definitely clarifies that. As you know, I've had four kids that have come through here, and I want to say, and I'm going to refer to somebody's dad who was a principal at the time, who on my very first orientation said that in the EMS, it's not about academic growth, it's about emotional growth, that this is a time that they're going to go from child to teen and where they discover themselves. And throughout my time as a parent within the middle school, I will tell you that this group of staff that you have in this middle school is very tuned in and keen to that philosophy. So, whether that was something that Mr. Scrola left as his legacy, it has carried through, and I've experienced it on a personal level. I don't know if other parents have, but, you know, so.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Weiss, because without the staff in the middle school, none of this would work. I've worked in other places where if you don't have the buy-in and the belief from the staff, these things don't move forward, so it is a testament to the Elwood Middle School staff.
Okay, and one more question, and then let Tom go. The student mentoring program, is there, in the high school, they have like a natural helpers, they have freshman buddies. I know at one point in the middle school, when you did an orientation at the beginning of the year, you kind of paired eighth graders with a sixth grader. Is there any prospect of doing something like that? I know you talked about student mentoring as an adult-to-student ratio, but I just wanted to know if you were considering.
Absolutely, and that's really the work we're going to do with our trainers. The trainers that we work with actually run programs like this with their high school students, I mean, excuse me, their college students, as well as community members. There's many different forms of student mentoring, including peer mentoring, so we're looking to really explore all of them.
All right, thank you, and I love the service learning. I've always been a big proponent of that, and so, yeah, I know they do it at Boyd, and it's wonderful.
You're done?
Done, I'm sorry.
Ms. Weiss, your three minutes is up.
Twenty minutes, right?
I just want to thank both of you for putting this together. I do believe also, it's not that academics take a backseat in middle school, but social-emotional growth between sixth and eighth grade is huge. Quick question for you with this survey, was it anonymous?
No, we had students put their name to the survey, because some shared some very sensitive information that we were able to follow up with.
Okay, were you able to aggregate the data, like break it up maybe by socioeconomics, gender, race, students with disabilities, single-parent homes? Because I feel like if you aggregate the data, you might be able to pinpoint certain issues. Were you able to do that yet?
We haven't gone that deep. We've certainly done by grade level, we've done by certain demographics that we were able to pull off of e-school, so we definitely have had a lot of hands in the pot. In addition, all of our guidance counselors and mental health staff have been involved, so they have a really good sense of knowing who our students are, but those are some very good suggestions, so thank you.
Yeah, I would definitely be curious just to see the discrepancies between different students, to see, you know, if this student population is struggling where this one's not. I think that can really help. Also, I'm a big fan of restorative justice, I know what it is, but it's not a one-size-fits-all. You know, for example, if someone is bullying, you could have to do a bulletin board. How do you decide as administrators what fits the role of restorative justice and what is something that a student crosses the line and you need to find another form of discipline? Do you have a method, a procedure?
Well, I think that's really our impetus for wanting to bring in some professional developers. We're really in stage one. You cannot have a restorative justice program if you have not built relationships. The whole purpose of a restorative justice system is that there is a relationship to begin with. So, when students potentially wrong another student, they wrong an adult, there's a disrespectful exchange. It really doesn't work to bring two people together to repair a harm to a relationship if there was not a relationship first. So, during this time, what we have been able to keep moving forward over the course of the pandemic is the one place where we're starting with our community circles, and that is in our advisory program. It's a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade group with one trusted adult. We're meeting every Friday, and it speaks to students building relationships with each other, getting to know each other outside of just the academic realm. They learn about their passions, their strengths, their weaknesses, and we're really starting in that place. The second phase that we've come to right now is talking about restorative language. So, most of the work that we've done at this point is building relationships and helping staff be more mindful of their language. We have not really delved very deeply into changing many of our disciplinary practices besides being more relationship-building ourselves when we're working with students who have made transgressions, but that's really our hope of working with the professional developers of how to start navigating that third piece.
That's in your five-year plan, correct?
In my, say that again?
You're going to implement that in within the five years? Hopefully, you'll do.
Yes, that is the point of, when you go to these trainings, they talk about it really being a five-year program to implement.
And also, I just want to, you know, I know how hard it is to get an entire staff on board when you have new initiatives, because as, you know, teacher, they keep rolling out new initiative after new initiative, and to see that a majority of your staff is enthusiastic about this, kudos to you and your staff. You know, keep up the good work, and, you know, thank you for doing this for our students, because I think, you know, research says if you can handle your emotions, you can increase your grades by 10%. You can have less behavior problems, and you can have more positive relationships. So, I know a lot of people don't see the connection between academics and social-emotional learning, but there's definitely a definitive connection, so keep it up and, you know, get these kids ready for high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Maloito?
I just want to commend everybody over at the middle school for the great success that you have brought to this district. I have three kids that went through the middle school. There has been a major, major cultural shift in the short time period from administrator to administrator that they came through, and it's a safe place. It's a tough time. Adolescence is like the hairiest, craziest hormonal wild ride. My kids felt safe, they felt respected. You brought out an environment here that I don't think many other places feel the same in a middle school setting. So, I thank you for your hard work. All these things are important, as are academics, but if we're not okay here, we're not okay anywhere. So, thank you for really drilling down. I think it was a successful response, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Dr. Siddiqui?
Yes, I echo the sentiment that when we were growing up, we called it junior high, just to kind of like a patchwork of, you know, going from elementary school to high school. It was never really considered an important phase of development, but we know much more, and I really feel that you've brought that to our middle school, and I also, you know, have multiple children that have gone through and one child that's in the middle school now, and I really think that you guys are doing a fabulous job. I really like that you got, that's an amazing response rate for a non-anonymous form. I want to tell you that that's, and then these questions that you asked are very detailed, and the fact that the students trusted the staff and administration, it really says a lot about the relationship that they already had with you. So, I didn't realize that it wasn't, that it was not anonymous, and thank you for including the kids to be involved in the code of conduct. I think that's really important, and I believe the high school has something like that as well, but I think that's really important to have student input in the code of conduct, so thank you.
Thank you.
Was the, was it mandatory to put your name on the survey, or could you have handed in a survey without your name on it?
It was mandatory. We had some concerns that if a student reported something that was concerning to us, that we would not know who it was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both for implementing this, and to get back to where Mrs. Cruz was, I don't know if she's still here in the audience, but, hey, Ms. Cruz, how important is it that the academics get coupled together with both social and emotional learning? So, as we know, we've been on a hiatus with as much of a normal education as we can have. We've been doing the best to make sure our students are receiving that, and we look forward to seeing R-Ready data and things moving forward to prove that that has been taking place. But to put something parallel to that, to help support them, the kids are going to be struggling. They are struggling. When these come off, when these go back on, when they come off, when they meet people, they don't even know facial interactions, they don't know how to read a room, they don't know how to read a body. They do know, "The gentleman's still there." They know how to read a cellphone, though. They do know how to read Twitter and Snapchat. So, this is imperative right now, but I do want to, please, please, as Ms. Cruz said, the academics have to go along with it. If one goes ahead of the other, they're not going to have the same effect. So, if we can just focus in on making sure that these roads merge together at some point, we will see, I mean, results, I know the district will see, and that's going to come from the work of our wonderful staff, who, as we know, has the buy-in, and that comes from both of your leaderships, so we thank you for that. It is not easy to build mountains and then get people to climb to the top and then carry the weight back down and back up and back down in this district and this middle school. Our teachers have done that time and time again, but the students are the ones who are really going to be wearing the weight of this. So, we have to make sure when there are the peaks and the valleys, that the staff is there to make sure academically and socially that we're ready to address these, because it's like, once you pull the sheet, you know, the sheets back, you're going to start seeing some really scary things right now. These children are in tough times. They are damaged, they are really, really struggling. So, I am so proud of this program, so proud of the implementation of it and the initiative of it, and I'm looking forward much to the successes of it, so thank you both.
Yeah, two things. Dr. Hall, please take note. Curriculum committee presentation academic initiatives at Elwood Middle School, because I think the board and community will be just as impressed with that side of our coin. And I don't want to gloss over how Dr. Moran introduced her presentation and congratulate on the administration of the building of how far they have progressed in the Schools to Watch initiative. This is multiple-year application program, and the requirements for this building to meet that, with that designation is extensive. We celebrated the Blue Ribbon at John Glenn High School for a good period of time, and we will repeat and amplify that celebration when this building is eventually named a Schools to Watch, and I am certain that we will be. So, I thank you both for your dedication to students, faculty, and staff, as well as your presentation tonight. Thank you both very much.
All righty, and that brings us up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mr. Scrola. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, seeing none, right? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero. That brings us up to an action item tonight on the agenda. We have our school calendar, the adoption of the school calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. May I have a, excuse me, one second. May I have a motion for the following. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the 2022-2023 Elwood Union Free School District calendar as presented to the board at this meeting. May I have a motion? Motion, Mrs. Weiss. May I have a second? Second. Questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Weiss. I'm so used to going to Ms. Weiss, sorry.
I would like to make a motion to amend the calendar for the 2022-23 school year.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and we have a motion for an amendment to the calendar. That will take us.
Okay, and do we want to just say what the amendment is?
Questions or comments?
Oh, is that what it does?
Yeah. So, we have a motion to amend the calendar, second to amend the calendar, second, questions or comments?
So, my recommendation would be to amend the proposed calendar and add the additional day on November 23rd, the day before Thanksgiving, as an additional day off, which would bring us down to a 183 instructional days. I'm sorry, 180.
179.
Seventy-nine, so we'll basically be losing a potential emergency snow day.
Just to clarify, the state requires a minimum of 180 days. Within those 180 days, you are allowed to have up to four conference days built in. So, the calendar being presented to the board for your approval tonight, as amended with the suggested day off before Thanksgiving, would be 179 plus four, for a total of 183 days, putting our district three days ahead of the requirement, meaning there would be three emergency closings built in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Maloito, for making that motion to amend the calendar. So, Ms. Maloito made a motion to amend the calendar for the 2022-2023 school year to change the day to give us off on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the 23rd of November. Is there a second for this amendment and motion? Second, Mr. Scrola. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero.
Can you just briefly explain why we picked the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as that day? Just to clarify, I don't want people to think we picked it out of a hat.
Well, it's been done typically in years past. It's something that we're not always afford the opportunity to do so, but we have the flexibility to put on that 2022-2023 calendar, and typically, the day before Thanksgiving, Dr. Boss, correct me if I'm wrong, usually is a low-attended day of school.
Our attendance on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving tends to be a bit depressed, and the people who are here are even more depressed.
Well, thank you. So, Mrs. Marks, the updated resolution to be acted upon is as follows. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the 2022-2023 Elwood Union Free School District calendar as amended by the Board of Education at this meeting. All right, thank you so much, and we have the all-in-favor was five-zero.
Can I just make a comment about the consent agenda?
You may, Dr. Boss, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you.
Nope, it's okay. I appreciate the board's support of the agenda brought forward by the administration tonight, and tonight's consent agenda was chock-full of good things. I congratulate some of our veteran teachers whose retirement were accepted this evening. You know who you are, and we will celebrate you at the June meeting, and thank you for your service at that time. The clubs that were referred to by a parent during, it's Mr. Castanza, during public input, were approved for Harley Avenue this evening by the Board of Education. were approved for Harley Avenue this evening by the Board of Education, so thank you for that. And one new initiative was approved within the district today. We, at the suggestion of our executive director of PPS and Special Education, Mrs. Eileen Kelly Gorman, we are bringing forward a unified basketball program. And unified basketball exists in many school districts, and we will now have in Elwood, thank you to the support of the Board of Education, which is intended for our students with special needs. And it is a wonderful program that uses basketball to work with our students who do have disabilities and would not ordinarily have the opportunity to compete in athletics. It is a wonderful program that will be coached by our varsity basketball coach, Mr. Roganer, and assisted by players on the teams. So this is a wonderful chance for our special education students to interact with their typically developing peers in an organized way in athletics. It's something that we've wanted for a long period of time, and we will now have it, and I commend Mrs. Kelly Gorman and working with Mr. Shanahan to bring it to fruition, and I thank the board for their approval.
Thank you, Dr. Boss.
And Mr. Tom, if I could just mention, sorry, I was part of a program like this at another school, and it's probably one of the greatest things I've ever seen, watching these children play basketball, and we had cheerleaders, and everyone comes out, and I encourage everybody to come to a game. These kids cheer for each other, they high-five. It's something that I'm so happy that we're bringing to Elwood, because I think everyone in the community is going to benefit from this, and I thank Dr. Boss for bringing this forward to us to vote on.
Beautiful. And yes, Dr. Boss, and especially Ms. Eileen Kelly Gorman and the Board of Education, I'm sure the community is fully behind this and looks forward to some very, very competitive basketball games. I know I was able to participate in some of the wheelchair basketball events, and let me tell you, it is not easy. So I am so proud that we have the opportunity to afford this to our students. All righty, with that, yeah, it's worth a round of applause, for sure. See, there's things we can rally around together. We got this. All right, Ms. Marks, if you would, please, can you add the following resolution? M dot one-five to our minutes? Thank you. Board, bear with me, this is a long reading, and community, please bear with us. I apologize for getting up before Ms. Moran during your presentation, I just had to make sure, procedure, I was getting something procedurally accurate. May I have the motion for the following? Resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Nicholas C. Regano, Esquire of the law firm of Regano LLC, to serve as pro bono special counsel for the Board of Education in connection with a matter discussed in executive session. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes Nicholas C. Regano, Esquire of the law firm of Regano LLC, to commence any needed pro bono legal action necessary for the submission of an amicus curae brief on behalf of the Board of Education in connection with the January 28th, 2022 hearing in the case of Michael Demetrio et al versus New York State Department of Edu, excuse me, New York State Department of Health et al, docket number 2022 dash 00532, index number 616124 slash 2021, currently pending before the Supreme Court of the State of New York Appellate Division, Second Department, and to submit such amicus curae brief, subject to the final review and approval of the Board of Education, at no cost to the Elwood Union Free School District and/or the Elwood Board of Education Union Free School District. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute any necessary pleadings in connection with the above referenced legal action and submission of an amicus curae brief on behalf of the Board of Education, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the pro bono retainer agreement with Nicholas C. Regano, Esquire of the law firm of Regano LLC, and authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute such retainer agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. We have a motion, may I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Weiss. Questions or comments?
I'll go first. My prepared statement, I knew this was coming, so I'd like to share my thoughts with the COVID-19 has been a huge part of our lives for way too long, and it really hurts my heart when I see people going back and forth saying, "We're winning, you're losing the battle with masks." I think the community of Elwood, which I love so much, I think we're all losing. We've lost loved ones, we've lost time with family and friends, we've lost academic growth, we've lost emotional growth, we've lost planned vacations. Some of us lost our weddings or other celebrations and had to cancel them or change them. I think about this often at night, when, you know, I'm laying my head on my pillow. Some of us are scared, angry, and worried. A return to normal sometimes feels so close, yet sometimes seems so far away. How do we get back to normal? I don't know if we'll ever get back to exactly where we were before the pandemic. There's been some silver linings, you know, we rescued our second dog, and I've spent a lot, a lot, a lot of time with my family. Thanks to science, we have various new treatment options, and the death rate is going down. It does worry me a little bit that there are more children being hospitalized, and in Suffolk County, the rate, infection rate is still at 11.02%. As a board, we have written three letters supporting parental choice, and I stand behind all of them. One of our board letters has already been added to the amicus brief, so Elwood is already represented. I also encourage everyone to write their own letters, because there is power in numbers. There are two points of the amicus brief that I 100% agree with. I believe the government of New York is abusing their power, and they're slowly taking local control away from us. It's becoming more about politics. You don't need to applaud, you don't need to applaud, you don't need to applaud. It is becoming more about politics than our children. I fully support writing additional letters supporting parental choice and local control. If the mandate does expire in February 21st, I have no problem with going back to no mask or mask optional. There's one part of the amicus brief that doesn't sit right with me. It states that removing the mask mandate won't harm others, and that troubles me, because I don't believe that. I do believe that the mask mandate does protect people. I do believe there is potential harm, so that part of the amicus brief doesn't sit well with me, because my job is to protect the entire community. So I agree with two out of the three points, and that's my opinion on the amicus brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skrola. Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you. I think the whole objective of this brief is that there was a decision, a grassroots thing brought forward, I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind, and there was a decision by the courts on Monday that, you know, said that the governor overstepped her bounds, and then on Tuesday, an appeal was put in. So the brief itself will, the amicus brief, is to really, the point of it is that, to stop that overstep, and that's really what we're trying to do here. And as far as I'm concerned, I've always been, you know, a proponent of parental choice. It's, what scares me is the abuse of power. And if you do something, if, you know, now you're talking about masks, but what about tomorrow and the next day? So, that's where I stand on it. It's a matter of putting this abuse of power, that's what we do in an educational, you know, we teach our children to follow the laws, we teach our children, you know, about the Constitution. We have to go in line with that, and we've been pretty consistent all across the board. You know, when Tuesday came about, as some described the most glorious day in Elwood, we followed what the law said, and, you know, we didn't say, "Oh, no, no, you have to wear a mask," because we don't believe in that. We felt, so that is where we stand with that, and I'm very pleased that we're going to be going forward with this.
So I just want to be clear that this is not an anti-mask issue for me. This is an abuse of government power for me. If this particular item was handled with the improper procedural manner that it was, then what else is being handled in the same improper procedural manners? As a board member, we take an oath to uphold the law, and when our government doesn't have the same expectation, I take issue with that. So I don't want anybody to blur the lines that I am an anti-masker because I mask, my children mask, my adult children, I can't speak for them, they do, they're adults. We do take risks, those are our risks. We engage in high-risk sports, but ultimately, they're masked. My son came to school with a mask the other day, it is what it is. I'm not anti-mask, I'm not pro-mask, I'm not anti-vax, I'm not pro-vax. I just want people to have choice. This governor, this governor, the mandate is set to expire in February. I have the utmost confidence that it will be extended, in my opinion. I just think mandates, sometimes it's a slippery slope. When you mandate something, you get less compliance because people feel cornered. So, to me, whether, I understand the complexity of this, people have lost people, people are sick, people have long-haul issues, children do get sick and they do die. I mean, let's not bury our head in the sand about that. That's not the issue. The issue here for me is if our government is not following proper protocol and procedure, what else is going on? And so I want to see the mandate removed so that we can have local control, because what happens in Elwood is different than what happens in the Bronx, or in Albany County, or in Plattsburgh, New York. Like, we need to make, we have asked, we have been the first district to send letters. People used our letters. They copy, every district on Long Island has a copy of our letter. Some followed, some didn't. We have gotten no answers. We have asked for metrics, we have asked for parent choice. So please don't blur the lines. I don't want to hear that I'm an anti-masker, or an anti-vaxer, or a pro-vaxer, or pro-this. This has nothing to do with my personal belief, this has to do with the abuse of government power. Therefore, I support having the district participate in this.
Thank you, Ms. Malalito. Dr. Siddiqui?
So I wanted to start by saying that the letter that was included in the amicus brief, I was part of the writing of the letter. It was a community effort, and, but some of the things that were in that letter that we sent to the legislature was from us, we helped to word that. And I stand behind that letter. I do believe that we need metrics, and we need some numbers to know when to remove the mask. I do believe that parents should have the choice, but it has to be during the safest time possible. I do believe, I still stand by not having any force making children get vaccinated. I encourage parents to find out from their doctors, but it should be a choice between you and your pediatrician, and I agree with that. What I don't agree with, and as Mr. Skrola stated, that in the amicus brief, the third point, it says that there's no harm in removing the masks right now.
The mandate, the mandate.
The mandate, removing the mandate, I apologize. I do support parent choice, but I do support it when the metrics are better. During the summer, we didn't have masks in the school, and even in the summer, it was more of a, it was a choice at that time, the numbers were low. So I do think, I do agree with Mr. Kern's statement when he came up and said, "It's time for another legislative letter, another letter from our legislative committee," and I will help to author that as well, in addition to including community members. But I don't feel comfortable signing this particular brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui. So, yeah, there is three very unique points to the amicus brief. When you're a parent, and before I was a parent, nobody gave me the Parent 101 Handbook. My wife read the Mother's Expecting, whatever that was, and I never read it. Don't think I'm doing okay, though. But with that said, nobody told you that the government was going to make choices for you when you became a parent. It's not in there, it's not anywhere. And the governor previous to her, and herself now, has overreached, has not done her due diligence, has not put things forth procedurally accurate, and if we give her the option to continue that, if she treads down the pathway that she's doing, it starts there, and we don't know where it ends. To that point, 100% wrong. As far as the harm onto others, that one I struggled with. All right, masks could help, the mask could not help, but I echo Ms. Costanza, she left, but in the peak of COVID, there was barriers, there was masks, sanitizer, I didn't take my shoes off inside the home, we lysolled every grocery bag that we brought in, I had a newborn, and I had an 89-year-old grandfather living with us. He got COVID. He spent four months dying in our home in my arms. I did every preventative measure that I could to protect him. Masks, barriers at work, washing hands. So do I feel that, yes, the number's back up to 10.02, whatever it may be, is it the right time? I don't know, I'm not an expert. But I do know that at some time, at some point, we have to take a step forward, and we have to bring our country and our community and our children's life back to normal. That normal, as I said before, is not going to be normal. We're fortunate that we have a school district that recognizes that years ago, currently, and for the future. We're putting programs in place, and we're getting ready to gear up to take on one of the most challenging endeavors in academics and in the schools, and we're ready for it. But with that, does take a point to make a position. Mr. Kern, Mr. Fox, we've heard numerous times, you're correct, we've written letters, we've not gotten responses. We've written to the locals, we've written to the top, we've gotten nothing in response. There is no answer. It's arbitrary. Everything that we have waited for and listened for and trusted in has been arbitrary. With that said, is this a real thing? Yes, as I said, I watched grandpa die. It was real. He had it, he got it. He said to me, he said, "Jimmy, I survived the Korean War, I survived falling off a building when I was a sheet metal worker." At 80 years old, he got into a horrific car accident and rolled over, and he survived. He said, "A virus is going to take me out," and it did. There was nothing we could have done to prevent that. I don't know if there's anything now that we can do to further prevent any losses. Maybe we not have any in this community, we not have any in the country anymore. I can't sit here and say that it's a mask issue, it's a vax issue, it's just a issue. It is an issue amongst all of us, and to me, we have to take a step forward. So with that, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. All in favor? Three-zero. Three-two, excuse me. Now, please bear with me, because that was not supposed to be on the agenda, so I'm going to find my spot. We're up to policy. Thank you, Ms. Weiss, I'm going to flip the page. Yes, that brings us up to policy in the agenda.
Mr. Tom, I think the community president is looking for clarification of the action that the board just took.
I am sorry if that was not clear, the vote was three-two, we are supporting the petition ourselves to the amicus brief. Sorry, Dr. Boss, you are right. Yeah.
So I just wanted to say something. Regardless of what side of this position you're on, I just need to really ask the community to make a concerted effort to try to be respectful of one another. I cannot believe some of the stuff that I'm seeing, I've been trying to stay off Facebook just because I can't take it anymore. Everywhere. I just feel like times are difficult enough, like, everybody has to try to stay calm. Everybody coming in hot all the time and talking disrespectfully and emailing disrespectfully and taking shots at one another is not going to help us heal as a community. We do need to respect differing opinions. Just be respectful, everyone, that's all I ask. I'm gonna, I can't even imagine what the three of us are going to hear from parts of the community, and the, Mr. what the three of us are going to hear from parts of the community. And Mr. Scrollo and Dr. Siddiqui, we're just getting clobbered from every end. And everybody's clobbering in each other. And at the end of the day, we really are a loving, warm community, and we always come together in really, really awful times. I ask everybody to please start coming together, regardless of what side you are. We could do this respectful, and we can get there together. And hopefully, this is just a blip on the radar at some point in time. But I just, please, ask. Let's start being proud of Elwood. Let's start coming together, and let's move forward together.
Doing questions and comments 2.0. Sorry. All right.
Just one more point. It was your voices on both sides that brought us to that point. And this is what local government is about. So, I just want to, you know, reiterate Heather's response about being respectful, but I don't want you to quiet your voice. We don't want a community of lambs. We want people that are going to advocate for our children and what's in the best interest of our children. We put ourselves out there tonight, and there were differing opinions, and joining a lawsuit with maybe districts that we don't really agree on every single issue with, but we're independent. We tried to stay singularly focused and said, "Is this in the best interest of our children and our community?" And is what they're doing here right? Or do we feel that there's an overextension of power? And when we came to that decision, each of us independently, and you heard each of our voices, but that also, we heard your voices, and that's helped us immensely. So, please continue that.
Yeah, Dr. Siddiqui.
Yes. I also wanted to echo what everyone is saying here. And I also wanted to say that please continue coming to the meetings. I want to say, I, when I started coming to the meetings years ago, sometimes I would come to a meeting and not a single person was in the room. And I want to say that your voices do matter, and you are, by participating in local Board of Ed and local meetings, you are making a difference. And you're making your voice heard, and you're making us feel like we are representing you, which that's why we're here, right? We're here because you elected us, and we represent you. It's not that we only represent what we're thinking. We're trying to represent the whole entire community. So, I want to encourage you to continue coming to the meetings and coming. I know most of you probably will, but I want to encourage everybody to come to the meetings because they're really, it's a great thing. So, this is democracy. There's not democracy all over the world, but this is what it is. Thank you.
Tom, do you feel like you have anything else you want to add here?
No, like I said, I, like, I just want to make sure everyone understands. I do agree the governor is abusing her power. I do agree they're taking local control away from us. The only issue I had was the statement that said, "Removing the mandate won't harm anybody." But this is a democracy. This is how it works. So, I support the board's decision. Also, we had a gentleman speak before about teen suicide and people bullying on social media. And I think as grown adults, we need to take the lead. And, you know, I always tell my students, "Think before you click." All right? You may be hot and heavy, but you have to realize when you post something on the internet, it stays there forever. And we are supposed to teach our children the right way. So, if there's something you want to say, email us. We're always here. Just, you know, let's set an example for our kids of how democracy works in that we may not always agree, but when things happen, we can support each other and get through this. I love this community. I stand with this community, and I look forward to the future. Thank you.
I'm done. We're good. Any more of us talk tonight? We filled the air too much. With that, we bring us up to policy, and we have a few on the agenda this evening. So, we have draft policies that are reviewed by the Super Chief of School and Policy Committee and submitted tonight for a first read. Those policies are 1-530, Smoking, Vaping, and Other Tobacco Use on Premises; 5-151 and 5-151 are homeless children; 6-710, Purchasing Authority; 6-800, Payroll Procedures; 6-900, Disposal of District Property; 8-130, School Safety Plans and Teams; 8-635-E, Parents' Bill of Rights for Students' Data Privacy and Security; and 9-14.1 and 9-14.1 are staff complaints and grievances. Are there any questions or comments regarding the draft policies this evening?
Just sitting on the Policy Committee with Dr. Siddiqui, I just want to make note that the, most of the amendments to these policies came down from the New York State School Board, and they're, you know, grammatical. There's nothing major in them that changes the context of them to the degree that it would alter their meaning. It's just a matter of cleaning them up and updating them to certain regulations that have come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. And thank you to the Policy Committee for staying on top of all the ever-changing policies, as well as our district clerk, Ms. Marks, does a wonderful job of making sure that all the regulation changes and policy changes that come before us from NISBA and NISBA Council, that we are able to update and implement them to make sure that we are procedurally and policy accurate. So, thank you for that. So, seeing, Dr. Siddiqui, have a comment?
Yeah, I just had one comment. On the 6-900, disposal of district property, I don't know if you guys noticed, but in the consent agenda, we got rid of an IBM typewriter. And I was just, like, admiring that. I thought that was interesting.
Probably could have saved that for the archives.
It's probably worth a lot of Facebook.
Yes.
The Smithsonian was not interested in picking it up.
I was surprised.
All righty. That's our policies for this evening. That brings us up to our second residence remarks. And as promised by the Board of Education, the floor is open. We are here to listen. It is still three minutes, and my blurb still stands. I'm not going to read it, plus I write it this, early this evening. So, if you have remarks that you would like to make to the Board of Education, please address us now.
I'm not as tall as Mr. Kern, but this seems to work, I think. Good evening. My name is Andre Berknel, father of three in the district. I'm also a teacher in Queens. Just wanted to kind of go through, you guys took a little bit of wind out of my sails with signing that amicus brief. And I, so for that, I just want to say thank you. I sincerely appreciate what you guys are saying about how, yes, you are the board. We are the community, and I appreciate the fact that you guys heard our voices as we kept pushing for you guys to join that amicus brief. That was one of the things I was going to ask you guys about tonight. With that, going back to the whole, you know, with what some of you guys said about the risks of losing the masks, losing the mandates, I know this past Tuesday, our students were, some of our students were maskless here in Elwood. I've heard numbers as low as 10%, that, as low as 10% of the students were masked, I'm sorry, as low as 10% of the students were unmasked. I've heard numbers as high as 50%. So, I'm just going to go ballpark right in the middle and say maybe a quarter of the students were without masks on that day. I realize we're only two days past that, and so I know we don't have data, but, you know, I know, I don't feel that there was a significant spread in that one day. And I realize the numbers don't come back that quickly. Is there a spread without the masks? Maybe. I don't know. I know one of the things that you guys had mentioned about the going back to a normal is when our children had healthy immune systems. As I said, I'm a teacher in a city. My school is about 1,500 students. It's been spread. Some of my students have gotten COVID. I know that. Every single one of the students that I've talked to that has come forth to me and told me that they had COVID has, I asked them about it, and they said, "Well, it was like a cold." I had one student die this year, but that was of an overdose. And I realize, you know, there's a weird line between, you know, drug overdoses and teen suicides and the masks and the COVID, but it's this whole straying from the normal, I think, that I would like us to get back to. Finally, and then the one last thing, I want to say, like, you know, again, I know that there's a risk. I know that if we take off the masks, I know that the numbers might tick up a little bit. I'm worried about that as well, but I'm also very much for what you guys were saying about the parental choice, about the free will. And as a Christian, I'm going to say, you know, I know so many people get upset at so many of the bad, bad things that happen in this world. And like, you know, why does God let people do these things? And one of the ways that I look at it is, is God gave us free will. And you guys are trying to push to give a little bit of the free will back to the parents. I'm almost done here, Mr. Tomio. I'm sorry. But like, you know, with this, the reason why God gives us free will is so that we can make the choices to do the right things. And if he could just make us do the right things all the time, I know he can, but
Thank you, Mr. Berknel.
Because he's giving us the choice, we can do great things. And I'm so proud of Elwood for joining this. We did something great in joining the amicus brief, and I thank you for fighting for us to have the choices to do something great with our community.
Thank you, Mr. Berknel.
Hi, everyone. I'm Christine Smith. I have two kids in the district, a third grader and a sixth grader. Most of my stuff that I was going to say was now addressed. But I just want to say thank you for joining the brief. I was one of the petitioners. I was one of the parents that challenged the governor because I do see that she is constantly moving the goalpost. And yes, Mrs. Momalito, I agree with you. She's going to try to extend it, and God knows what else she's doing. And somebody's got to stop her because the mental health issues in our youth is a pandemic, and it's got to be addressed. So, I am super happy that you are joining. I am praying that this judge tomorrow realizes that's unconstitutional and that we can go back to normal because I can't tell you how many text messages and calls and everything I got on Tuesday. It was the most amazing day. My kids came home and said, "It was so nice to be able to focus and learn and not hear all day long, 'Put your mask back up. Put your mask back up.'" The teachers were actually able to teach, which is what we want them to do here. So, I'm very happy with that. I also totally agree that there needs to be respect, but I will say that has to go both ways. In this district, in this community, we have had such a bad divide where anyone that wants to get rid of any of the restrictions, it's like you're jumped on instantly. You want to kill everyone. You want to do this. You want to do that. Like, no, I just want to have the choice for what's going to work for my kid. If you want to put five masks on, go right ahead. But don't attack me and don't harass me because I want to do what I think is right for my kid. So, I agree. I think it's great. I'm super happy. I'm super proud that you guys joined it. I feel for you. I know that you're going to get a million emails from lots of people. I think it's very obvious that the community spoke tonight. There was a lot of people here today. And I think a lot of it was because their kids did, for the first time on Tuesday, some of the kids in the younger grades, the first time they went to school in a more normal situation. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate it. And I also will say, let's all respect each other's opinions and views. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening again. I want to thank the board because, but I feel like we're starting to get back to a democracy here. We're listening to the people. And Mr. Scrollo and doctor, I do appreciate and respect your positions. But the inverse of that is that the masking broke my daughter and my son. So, keeping the mask on hurt them. I want to also make sure, because no one is actually saying this, what the governor is doing, she's creating laws and enforcing laws, that sidesteps the legislative branch. If this appellate court agrees with her, we don't have a legislative branch anymore. There will now be precedents for her to do anything she wants. She just simply has to state, "We have an emergency." And it could be anything. And then that will be put into place. The Constitution and the Declaration of Independence was written specifically to get away from a king. Now, I know that term is kind of old. You can use dictator, authoritarian. I don't care what the word is. But that is what is going to happen. It'll happen with voting. It'll happen with any right that we have. It's an emergency. Therefore, things have to be held back. So, I do appreciate what everybody is saying up here, but this goes deeper than public health. This goes to the core of our country. So, thank you for joining the brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Elena Vaviakis Narvez. I have two daughters in Elwood Middle School. Thank you for agreeing to put the Elwood name on the brief tomorrow morning. I really appreciate it. And even though we don't agree, I respect and value the opinions of the two that didn't vote in favor. I want to share something that I, I'm going to try not to cry, but I'm sharing because maybe other people are in the same situation as my family and aren't going to share. Okay. I've been coming and asking for mask choice for a while. On Monday night, when we found out that masks weren't required on Tuesday, I was so excited to tell my kids, "You don't have to wear a mask to middle school tomorrow." And one of my daughters turned white, and she looked like she was going to cry. And so, I pulled her aside, and I asked her what was wrong. And she said, "Mommy, I don't like my face anymore. And I want to wear my mask tomorrow." And I said, "Okay. Well, if you, if you want to wear a mask, you can, of course, wear it." But, I mean, it broke my heart. I mean, they're being conditioned to hide. I mean, once upon a time, kids weren't allowed to wear masks on Halloween to school. Okay? And now they wear them every single day. So, we made an orthodontist appointment because she doesn't like her teeth, and we'll get her confidence back up. But there's so much more to this masking than, and I don't know how this is going to be received, but I've not worn a mask as much as possible. I've never had COVID, and neither has my family. I don't know if it's maybe I'm boosting immunity. And I, James, I feel for you for the loss of your grandfather. I have a 93-year-old grandfather, too. And so, when we were around him, we would put our masks on, and he asked us not to. And he said, "I don't, I could not wake up tomorrow, and I want to see your faces while I have the opportunity." So, it's just so much more than the great divide between, and I'm a good person. I don't want anybody to get sick. And one of my daughters who did, both of them ended up not wearing the mask, but one of them that wasn't wearing one, her teacher shared with the class that she's expecting a baby and that she will not ask the kids to wear a mask, but that if they come close to her, she's going to wear one, and if they come close to her, to please wear a mask. And my daughter said, "I just put it on at my desk because I didn't want to make her uncomfortable." I don't think not wearing a mask makes you a bad person. It's just, it's doing a lot more than protecting other people. Okay? That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing your story with us.
Hi, my name is Justin Borg. I have two children in the district. My daughter attends Elwood Middle School. I want to thank you very much for passing this tonight. I appreciate it. My daughter was ecstatic, and she felt that she could understand in class. I want to talk more about, I kind of elaborate on what she spoke about. Is there a plan for mental health going forward? I don't think this is more of a pandemic. We can get over a disease, but no one talks about the mental effects on children. I'm a suicide survivor. I saw my best friend take his life because he had bipolar, but this is affecting kids deeper than just the chemical imbalance and some things. And I think that it's important to address. And I don't want to be, I have the opportunity to say something. I just hope that there's people out there that kind of can come forward and not be afraid to talk to people. And if there's going to be some sort of group set up or an easier way for children to talk to, that's horrible, that, you know, someone doesn't like their face in middle school anymore because they've been hiding behind these things. And I think that's a serious thing that needs to be addressed going forward, whether we wear masks or not. Regardless, mental health in children is something that's very important, and I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. And thankfully, we're here this evening to see a wonderful program being implemented at the Elwood Middle School. And we are fortunate that we were the recipients of the funds from the federal grant monies, and we have earmarked a good proportion of that money. from the federal grant monies, and we have earmarked a good proportion of that money to the SEL and the social, emotional learning of our students. Dr. Bossert, I can't speak to the amount of social workers and psychologists and things that we have brought in and programs. But if you would like to jump in and elaborate, I think it is a wonderful thing that we have been doing, and we're going to continue to do to make sure that we meet the students at where the students are at. Every student has endured this pandemic at a different rate, and they're going to recover at different rates as well. So it's important to meet the student at where they are. And we have programs readily available and have been in place prior to the pandemic to make sure that we're doing so.
I think you did a very adequate job, Mr. Tomio. The board and the administration identified student mental health and well-being and teaching to the whole child long before the pandemic began. The pandemic amplified that need, so we doubled down on our resources. And so much of the focus of our work over these last few years is about the mental health of the students and responding to the concerns that have been raised by the pandemic. And I'm committed to this community that will continue to do that with rigor.
Good evening again. Thank you so much for deciding to join in on the brief. That's really great news. I think will make a lot of people happy. And again, as others have said, I understand the varied views on the filing. But I really appreciate this step forward for parental choice. I did have a question. I had requested once before. Do you have a listing of the NICE ed amendments that they're seeking to push forward in the next couple of weeks? Because I think that they would be something that's really important to share with the community in keeping everybody aware of what's going on. One of them is seeking to allow full immunizations in schools, which alone doesn't seem like a big deal. But when it's considered alongside the pending bill that would remove parental consent for children age 14 and up, it is a big deal. So I think it might be helpful if you're aware of those, if that's something that you could share so that if parents want to advocate, even on their own, that they have the ability to do so. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, I double-checked my emails, Mr. Tomio. I did not receive an email from you today.
I'm going to pause right there. Please pause the clock. If you want to approach, please do. I have it right here on 4/20.
If you could forward it to me, because it wasn't in my inbox, my deleted, or my spam.
Sure.
If you prefer, I foil it again. I'll do that. But I think it'd be easier for everyone if you just forward it.
I just want you to know, I did, don't know what happened between now and then. There was a lot of chains going on. I don't know if it's embedded somewhere. But by all means, after the meeting, I will forward it back to you so you have my response on behalf of the Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Kern. Thank you.
Just while we're waiting for the next resident to come to the microphone, council is present tonight. We asked one of our attorneys from Ingraham &amp; Smith to be here this evening. And firstly, I would like to thank Mr. Meneary and his associates and Ed Ingraham. The reason why the communication to the community was so late on Monday night was because there is a lot of case law and determinations that needed to be made before we could get clear guidance. And I want to point out that Ingraham &amp; Smith was one of the few firms on Long Island to give what turned out to be the correct advice on the matter, which is why this district took action to allow parent choice on Tuesday, which we now know was the correct process to take. We subsequently had to change it based upon the standing that was granted. And we'll see what happens tomorrow, and we will act accordingly. I think it's important, however, in consultation with council before the meeting, to make sure that the community understands that the board's action tonight certainly adds Elwood's name to the briefs that will be processed tomorrow. By the way, we were already there. The letter that was written by the board and myself in October was already submitted as an artifact in that case. So Elwood will be double-represented, so to speak. But it's important for everyone to understand that the mask mandate remains in place. We will wait and see how the judge rules tomorrow, if the judge rules tomorrow. There has been some news reports that he will delay a ruling until early next week and to give ample time to review all the artifacts that are being submitted. And then we will advise the community accordingly. But I would like to thank Michael to be, for being with us tonight. He was prepared to answer any questions that were posed to the board that might need some evaluation. And he certainly helped guide the board through the process, you know, giving a privileged counsel prior to the meeting. But it's important to know that I will share the information we receive as soon as we receive it, and council has the opportunity to confirm it for us. And we will move forward. And I appreciate all the remarks that have been made by the community about working together and united. I hope that you heard the passion in my voice in Tuesday night's call because I probably received more email directly from parents this week than in the last six months combined. And it really was on both sides of the issue and a lot of different opinions heard. But I want to join the board in commending the community for demonstrating civil discourse. My job in this, in this community is to be the lead educator. And I appreciate the fact that the adults have been able to set a model for what conversation, debate is supposed to look like. I have viewed meetings that have taken places in other places that haven't been civil, and a level of respect has not been shown from one another that has been shown here tonight and in our prior meetings. And I want to thank the community for setting such a fine example for our students.
I'll do it correct this time. Kimberly Cameron. Many people have spoken tonight about the psychological challenges that our students are facing in regards to mask-wearing and bullying and positions and the divide in not just this community, throughout the entire country and throughout the entire world. To speak on behalf of a parent also with special needs, because James has many of them, prior to the pandemic in a recent news report, 5% of children were being diagnosed with speech delays. After and in the duration of the current trend, we see over 20% in speech delays in toddlers that have been classified. That across and in the study totaled to 365 of an increase in patient referrals from parents of babies and toddlers referencing speech delays. If you also need reference to that data, I can provide that for you as well in an email. As we know, in the development of babies, eight months, babies begin to learn speech and lip reading and face reading. But the decrease in words and attempt of eye contact is directly and adversely impacting them. Thank you very much for those of you who voted in favor of the brief. And for those of you who are still on the fence on that, on that three-point made within the brief, although, you know, we can agree to disagree on that parameter. But teaching the Constitution and civil rights is my life's work. My life's work for over 21 years. And I will tell you, throughout thousands of years of history, the only way to assemble and to get back to what you perceive as normal is to unite and to fight against abuse of power and tyranny. Because make no mistake, you are one shot. You are one mandate. You are one piece of legislation. You are one step from being excluded, from being isolated. And that stands in thousands of years of history. So though I understand your position, we can agree to disagree. Thank you from the bottom of my heart as a parent, as an educator, as a parent with a special needs child for moving forward with this, with this brief. Thank you.
Any other residents' remarks this evening? No more? Okay. Well, with that being said, yes, the democratic process has been heard for many months now. It takes both sides to get somewhere. And unfortunately, it took a lot of disagreeing between members of our community and to get back to where we were, to echo the sentiments of everybody this evening. A step forward for everybody is definitely something that I think we all look forward to. We may not all agree. We may disagree, and that's okay. It is okay, Ms. Cameron, to agree to disagree. It's healthy. It's important. The discourse is needed, and I commend everybody. Whether you voted for it, you didn't vote for it, you supported it. You don't as a community member. It takes a village. And Elwood is one of those villages that, at the end of the day, we all do care very deeply about each other. You can watch one tragedy in this community, and you can watch how it doesn't matter which side of the aisle you're on, how quick everyone comes together. That's the Elwood. That's the reason I bought my home. I continue to grow my family here. That's why you're sitting in the audience tonight as community members. That's Elwood. That's who we are regardless of anything that goes forward. So I commend everybody this evening. And yes, Dr. Bossert, to echo your sentiments, thank you for a wonderful board meeting this evening. There was no screaming. There was no yelling. We didn't have to adjourn and come back. We didn't have to have security. It was the way it should be. So thank you. With that being said, can I have a motion for an adjournment? Motion, Mr. Scrollo, second, and Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor. 5-0. Good night, everybody.